What's up? You ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Inkster Planning Commission Meeting. I am not calling the meeting to order. We do not have a quorum. Therefore, this will be an informal discussion at the moment. It is six forty-seven and let's erase what I just said from your memories. Time is six forty-seven. It is Monday, June twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. This is the City of Inkster Planning Commission Meeting, and we are officially calling this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Yeah. Thank you. Just for the record, we do have three confirmed absences that communicated with me directly. That was Commissioner Matt Willis, Commissioner Tanya Williams, and Commissioner Kim Faison. Uh, we have two vacancies. We had a vacancy in January that hasn't been filled yet, and we had a vacancy as late as last nightmare.
Yes.
About one AM from one of our other commissioners who actually sold a property is no longer a resident of the City of Inkster. Therefore, we have two vacancies. And this quorum is based off of the appointed officials of this body. So we will be looking to fill those, so.
We got two, two vacancies.
Two vacancies, three absences tonight, and we have four people here, which consists of the quorum. A roll call. We just have a forum, and we are at the adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Sorry, Chair?
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Um, we need to present the agenda for the special meeting, uh, the minutes for the special meeting at the next meeting.
All right.
Um, the minutes are not ready yet.
Minutes are not ready yet?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to pull that off of here, or? No. Okay, there's no, well, adoption of the agenda, there's no adoption of minutes coming up next, so.
Yeah.
All right, so we could just strike adoption of minutes from the record, right?
Cool, thanks.
No problem. All right, everybody, so we will be removing item three, adoption of minutes. That was from the special meeting. They are not ready yet, so we will not be voting on that. Is everybody okay with the agenda as it is at this moment?
Yes.
Hearing no additions or additional subtractions, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
So move us here.
Oh, I'm sorry, not as is, uh, with the removal of adoption of minutes, my apologies.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Is the property moved by Mayor Wembly and supported by Commissioner Daniels? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are down to item four. First hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public, uh, let me rewind. You know what, um, Mara, uh, we need to revisit that, because I, um, that language is on here, because it's, it's twice where it says for items not scheduled for a public hearing. Uh, it's at the top for item four, then it's at the bottom for item nine. So or maybe, maybe I'm just confused, I'm sorry. Where it says first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing?
Yes.
Um, I know one spot is for it says that twice. So do we need to change that?
If you wish to, but I had the impression that if the public would like to discuss items during a public hearing, they would do such a public hearing. In non-public hearing items, they would do so during the public comment.
The reason I say that is because at the end, that's supposed to be, I think, for public comment for anything pertaining to the planning commission, but this one, uh, item four right now is supposed to be for any items on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, just for clarity purposes, let's change that for items not, not on the agenda.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or am I clear on that?
You're good.
Okay, great. So this is the first hearing from the public. Public, you have an opportunity to stand before the planning commission, state your name for the record, and speak to the agenda items. Of course, prior to us taking a vote, whether it's public hearing, new business, old business, et cetera. At this time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record, and I would ask that you please be concise and direct when speaking. Public, you have an opportunity to speak.
Sorry, Chair, I just want to have clarity.
Right ahead.
So are, is the public speaking on items regarding the public hearing?
Agenda items.
So any agenda items, including public hearing?
Yes.
Yep.
My name is, uh, Will Hamina Baldwin.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'm a resident, a recent resident of, uh, the City of Inkster. And, um, I do have a question regarding number five, letter A.
Five A, go right ahead.
For the storage yard. Um, could, I would like sort of an explanation, you know, for storage yard, um, industrial district. Is, is there going to be a building built there or something? I'm, I'm not quite understanding what's gonna go in that particular area.
Mara, would you mind to go ahead and address that? I'm opening up my actual packet. I'm sorry about that, ma'am. Um, item five A under public hearings.
Yes, um, so we're talking about two-nine-one-one Ash Street.
That's correct.
And the, the reason why it's, it's under a public hearing today is because storage yards in industrial districts require a special land use. The acres, the combined acres of the site is under an acre, so point seven-eight acres, and the facility itself is a small standalone, um, storage container. It's not a whole industrial district, um, or a whole industrial complex. It's a smaller building, and I'll try to find the dimensions for the proposed building, uh, but perhaps during the agenda item, the applicant can speak to. Any questions?
Absolutely. Is the applicant here? I don't see him. Is there a representative here for two-nine-one-one Ash Street?
Really just answered my question, uh, my curiosity, actually. So I'm, I'm good with what you told me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but just for clarity, I think this is the, um, the old big four tone that was at the end of the street of Ash Street. Tyrone Paisley has the, he has all his equipment and stuff over there now. That area. So what are, what are they looking to do? They've already it's just my question, they, they already storing stuff over there, so what are they looking to build? I see it in the application book.
Yeah, I think that's Tyrone's try.
Yeah, that's Tyrone, so that's Tyrone Paisley's property that's there. They already have stuff there already, and he has his dump trucks and construction trucks and all that stuff there already.
So he's looking to construct, uh, enclosed facility or, or storage container for his equipment?
All right, anybody else from the general public that would like to speak about agenda items? This is your time to speak before a vote is, um, the public hearings are opening before a vote is called for new business.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Shirley Hankerson, um, lifelong member of Inkster, I'm a lifelong citizen of Inkster. I'm just questioning all of these doggone marijuana dispensaries that, that's on here. And why do we have so many marijuana dispensaries on here when that is not what the citizens of Inkster want? Okay, and that is not how we had thought it was gonna be, because we never wanted three more plus the three we already have trying to come into Inkster on Michigan Avenue.
I'm the mayor.
I know who you are.
But you're looking directly.
Right, I am. On purpose. I know.
This has nothing to do with me.
Yes, it does. You the mayor.
No, it does not.
Yes, it does. But anyway, and because I just want to know what's going on with all these dispensaries, and why aren't these people going to their cities since it's legal now? And, and asking their council if they can put them into their cities. We don't want this all up and down Michigan Avenue. That is not what we had in mind for our city, and we don't even know the direction that the mayor's taking us in, because this is third year, and we haven't had a state of the city address.
All right, well, first, let's, let's, um, stick to the agenda items.
I am.
All right, and then secondly, let's go down and just address the questions that you had about the
A, B, A, B, C, D, E, F?
All right, the special land uses, SLUs, um, and the rezoning for three thousand Middlebelt. Then we have the special land use for two-nine-eight-nine-nine Michigan Avenue, two-nine-seven-zero-nine Michigan Avenue, two-six-two-zero-one Michigan Avenue, and one-four-four-four Inkster Road.
Want to know why? Why are we doing this?
The underlying question is, why are we having this many come before us? So I know in different conversations we've had with the planning department, and I'm gonna ask the planning department to speak to this. Were these in the pipeline, were these new applicants, want to be able to provide to Hankerson with a, uh, solid answer?
I don't want to live in a city with nothing but marijuana dispensaries all up and down Michigan Avenue, Inkster Roads, Middlebelt. I mean, why shouldn't we? I mean, all these people don't, they don't live here. Why don't they take this to their city and ask their council for what, for, for, for this to happen in their city? Because, and technically, the way it should have been, it should be for our citizens that wanna, you know, if that has a medical license, that might want to open up a dispensary.
What we'll do too is we'll follow up with the applicants to give them the opportunity to speak as to that question you asked, why bring it to our community versus did they apply?
It just falls for any and everything, right? But that's not what we want.
Ma'am, you're speaking as an individual, first of all, so you can't speak for we as a community, since you keep, since you keep looking at me.
Trust and believe. There's a lot of people that don't want it. Okay? That don't want this.
Before the button.
I will.
This is a part of the process. This is business. It's part of the
I understand business, but we don't need to.
Obviously, you don't.
Yes, I do. Yeah, I do understand.
Part of our ordinance.
That you changed, because you changed the order. Well, you made sure that it was changed.
All right, so hold on before you leave the podium, let's get your questions answered. Um, I was trying to type in something, I'm sorry, but go ahead. Mara, and respond to the question about these um, agenda items as far as, were they in the pipeline already, or were these new applications?
Okay, hi, thank you for coming out today. Thank you ever for coming out. Thanks for having me. Um, I know this is important conversation, so the City of Inkster has a moratorium on recreational marijuana facilities right now. However, there was a lapse in the moratorium for twelve days, and all of these applicants today applied for their medical and adult use retailer license within that twelve-day lapse of the moratorium. So all of these applicants legally applied for their marijuana business during that lapse. Um, there's still moratorium. There's been a moratorium since twenty-twenty. And it runs until January twenty-twenty-three. But during COVID or some exchange in government, there was a lapse, and these applicants today used, uh, applied for their marijuana business license.
Sure they did.
And in the zoning ordinance today, was upon discussion, is for us to review how these applicants relate to the zoning ordinance, because the planning commission oversees the zoning ordinance. Um, we don't oversee all of the ordinances within the City of Inkster, so we focus on the planning discussions today and how these projects relate to the regulations set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Well, that's, that's that one, and then the follow-up question is for the applicants to be able to speak and answer um, in regards to if they applied in their own, uh, cities. What was the response and so on and so?
I like to hear that.
All righty, thank you. Uh, I'll make note of that to ask applicants to address that. Is there anyone else from the general public that wishes to speak to agenda items that are on our agenda for tonight? This, for the general public, has everybody had an agenda and been able to review it? I just want to make sure we give you the opportunity, because once votes are called during public hearings and, and new business, that's when it's over, where there's no more discussion from the public. All right. If there's no one else from the public, we are moving down to item five, public hearings. We have a total of one, two, three, four, five, six public hearings. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearings. Or, you know what, let me just do this one by one, I'm sorry. The floor is open for a motion to open case number twenty-one dash twenty-three special land use storage yard at two-nine-one-one Ash Street for a public hearing.
So move us here.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Wembly and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Floor is open, I'm sorry, uh, the public hearing for case number A or item A, case number twenty-one dash twenty-three special land use is now open. Mara, I guess you could just reiterate on the storage yard at two-nine-one-one Ash Street.
Sure. Um, so the City of Inkster Planning Department has reviewed the site plan and special land use applications for the proposed contractor's storage yard and storage shelter at two-nine-one-one Ash. The project seeks to combine three parcels. The site is point seven-eight acres and located between Ash Street and Hickory Street, north of Cherry Street and just south of the railroad. This review is based on the site plan application from March seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And since it's a proposed storage yards, it also requires a special land use. Um, the project summary further involves, uh, the applicant proposes to construct a storage yard, including an open shelter for landscaping and, uh, construction equipment, so an open shelter for landscaping and construction equipment. And no vehicle parking for employees is proposed, because there won't be any employees. Um, the site is zoned M-one light industrial, where storage facilities for construction contractor equipment is permitted by a special land use. Uh, open storage is permitted, provided that is, it is enclosed within a building or an obscuring wall. The applicant proposes to install an eight-foot obscuring wall around the property. So a land survey is required to confirm that the vacant home on two-nine-one-four Hickory, and it's in your packets, it's featured on parcel two, uh, occupies a standalone parcel. Additionally, a parcel combination will need to take place before construction activity and site plan approval can be granted. So the applicant has a list of standards that they are required to perform by the zoning ordinance, and also make sure that the, that the vacant house is not on their land, so they have to provide a land survey and also combine their parcels upon final site plan consideration. And we have two, um, lists of conditions for the special land use and site plan consideration. Jared, you wish me to outline these?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, since it's the public hearing and we're just talking about the special land use, I'll just go into detail for the special land use.
Okay.
Okay, um, so pending any comments from the public during the public hearing, we recommend that the planning commission consider the following motion. Uh, we move to recommend approval for city council, uh, for the proposed special land use for a contractor's storage yard at two-nine-one-one Ash, subject to the outline conditions in the site plan review and following special land use review conditions. Uh, these are the conditions, so they have to abide by all the requirements in the site plan review as we said, as we stated. Uh, they have to provide information on the required eight-foot industrial fence screening. It's unclear what kind of material they will be using for the eight-foot fence, so we'd like to know what type of material they'll be using.
Yes, I was gonna ask about that when you said it's unclear. I know our ordinance, you know, w- w- we've been in a position too with the, uh, fence and screening. We've given different options, because it's been quite expensive, uh, for people to try to construct concrete, you know, and things that there's different options out there, but yes, that does seem to be clear. Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. And then they have to provide the required landscaping and irrigation system as outlined in the site plan review letter. They have to provide more information on the materials used to create the shelter. They have to provide a note on the site plan that the shelter will be permanent as required in the zoning ordinance. They have to receive a waiver from the planning commission to allow the storage yard to be the primary use of the site. Usually, storage yards are accessory uses, but due to the circumstance of this being a site that's small and south, directly south of the railroad in an industrial district, we find that this is an appropriate request. Um, provide a note on the site plan indicating that the front yard will not contain storage and that the storage will not be in parking spaces and will not impede traffic and that the storage shelter will not exceed twenty-five feet in height. These are all standards from the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Um, to the general public, I apologize, this is a public hearing. You do have an opportunity to speak to each and every single one of these items that we bring up. Um, I, I was moving a little bit too fast. I might be talking a little fast as well. My apologies on that. Again, this is a public hearing. You've heard from our planning department. Commissioners, do you have any at this particular time? Well, all right, hearing none. Let's turn it over to the applicant. Is the applicant here at this time for two-nine-one-one Ash Street that wishes to speak before this body? All righty, general public, I know we have one person, one resident speak already. Is there anyone else during this public hearing that wishes to speak to the storage yard special land use based off the information that our city planner has just presented us with? If so, please approach the podium, state your name for the record. Right here.
Good afternoon, all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, citizens. Um, with me, I have a personal, a relationship with this, uh, applicant. I know him to be a very, uh, productive young man. He's he does things by the board. He does things quite well. He's done work for me. Uh, he's done work for, uh, other people that I know. And he's very, very good at what he does. Uh, so I, uh, as a citizen coming to this body, I'd like to say that I support the efforts that he's doing. I've been over to the site. I've seen what he's doing. I'm absolutely impressed with how he's doing business and conducting it, and there's not a lot of, uh, traffic in that area. But I know that he would do exactly what he's trying to put together and do for this city. I think it's a plus for him developing that area as well. That's my, uh, take on it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And your name for the record, sir?
I'm sorry, my name is Juan Bradford, President of City of Inkster.
All right. Thank you both. Is there anyone else? Hearing none, um, and I know ladies who just entered, we were speaking on item five A about the storage yard at two-nine-one-one Ash Street. This is a public hearing for the general public to speak to. We just had persons speak in support of that. If you had anything to bring before us about that particular item at this time, feel free to do so. I'm not seeing any other movement or hearing anything else. The floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
Close. Also close, probably in support.
It's properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Mayor Wembly. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
So for further clarification, um, is, is one house on it and gets two vacant, like, vacant land, we're gonna build it? Another building? So, because when I, I couldn't find it anywhere other than Google. But it was a house.
Correct. There is a house in the northernmost parcel, um, and it looks like it's also part of a parcel that he wished, the applicant wishes to join together. Um, but I'm only saying that because sometimes boundaries are, um, incorrectly listed on Wayne State GIS maps. So that's why the applicant would have to conduct a land survey to make sure that that house isn't on the parcel that he owns.
And so it is just one house and two pieces of, and, and two pieces of parcel, nothing else is on this thing, and he wants to build something.
Yes.
Is my point.
Yes.
He's trying to, but we don't know what he's, we don't know what that's gonna look like or.
Yes, we do. So in the, the packet was the site plan, and although it was just one page, because it's, it just shows you a concept image of the open storage facility, and then also, um, in writing the applicant instructs that he will provide the required obscuring fence. So what the public would see is the obscuring fence, um, and then inside would be the open, uh, like pavilion, I'm going to say, open shelter for his equipment.
And it's I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. Is it for his own personal, he's not renting out and stuff like this. It's just for his own personal equipment, and he's not, he's not gonna be using it to rent out to others.
I don't believe he's using it to run out to others, but I mean, the applicant needs to be here to represent his case. I have no other information about that.
Anything further, Commissioner Davis? Anything further from this body? Already the, uh, we were in discussion, because a motion had already been called, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, two ayes and one nay.
With that.
What you mean? What was it?
That was closing the public hearing.
I thought it should, I thought it was.
No, well.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I misunderstand?
This was just closing the public hearing. This was not recommended for approval.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
So are you reconsidering or? Okay, so all in favor?
Uh, uh.
All opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is closed for case number two-one dash two-three special land use storage yard at two-nine-one-one Ash Street. We're down to item B. Um, and just, you know, for clarity, I was looking at the agenda and everything that we would recommend for approval looks like is under new business. So I know sometimes we voted uh, to close a public hearing, and then we voted for the special land use and the site plan at those particular times, and they're all under new business. You have an additional opportunity to vote at that time under new business.
Okay.
Uh, we're down to item B. Floor is open, I'm sorry, let me read it first. Case number twenty-two dash zero-five TA. Rezoning from B-three, General Business District to M-one Light Industrial at three thousand Middlebelt Road. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion stuff from public here.
For, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Mayor Wembly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Mara?
Yes.
Go ahead and address this, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant and general public.
Okay, so the planning department has again, uh, considered the rezoning requests. And so Jude Hamad of Juddco Holdings is the applicant who requests a rezoning for three thousand Middlebelts from the General Business District to the Light Industrial District for the purposes of transforming the existing vacant building into a facility appropriate for manufacturing activities and other permissible uses in the M-one district. The applicant has proposed a new land division that will create a one-point-four-five acre site on the west of Middlebelt Road, south of Michigan Avenue. This is the review based off the application from April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, so a little bit more of the summary of the request is that there is a, an existing single-story building within an existing parking lot that is currently located on the vacant site. The site shares its southern boundary with the railroad tracks. The current site accesses Michigan Avenue through two additional parcels, which the applicant proposes to close through a land division and recombination. The proposed site will not directly abut Michigan Avenue anymore and will solely be accessible off of Mich, uh, Middlebelt Road. And then we talked a little bit about reading the attached map in your packets. Um, and then the applicant proposes to combine all the parcels and re-divide them into two distinct parcels with the existing parking lot and building remaining on the new parcel. And the applicant will again eliminate the access from Michigan Avenue. Surrounding land uses are regional commercial and industrial. Um, and then I would like to say something else to the site. Uh, planning staff in the past, I've, I've noticed, we've been taking, um, a, a policy, informal policy on rezoning parcels that abut the railroad to the industrial uses. So this is another one of these requests to rezone a parcel that abuts or is next to the railroad as industrial use. So planning commission has, has a history of approving these uses in the past. Um, we have a recommendation from the planning department to recommend the proposed rezoning and subject to, um, the fact that the site will be recombined and re-divided. And subject to um the fact that the site will be recombined and redivided into two parcels to match the exhibit provided. And to ensure that the site will only be accessible by Mich- Middle Belt and not Michigan Avenue. So it can maintain its further industrial status if the commission were to approve.
Thank you. Alrighty, uh commissioners, do you have any? Questions, conversant, uh questions, comments, or concerns at this moment?
I would just like to hear from the applicant first.
Alrighty, is there a representative here on behalf of three thousand Middle Belt Road?
Yeah, hi.
Good evening.
I would want to begin by clarifying that I'm such a committee and I'm actually the attorney that's on the matter. Um, yeah, I represent Jet Co Holdings and I can answer um any questions for you.
Great, thank you. Um, I guess go ahead and give us a summary and anything and then if there's any. Questions from this body and then of course for the general public, please feel free to answer those at that time.
Yes, we intend on um rezoning from B three to M one and the reason why is because we want to use. Um, the facility as a warehouse distribution center for pallets.
Of pallets?
Yeah, we're thinking about pallets and a few other uh and a few other things that are in the works. We we're thinking maybe um clothing as well. Um, just a few things that the owner is thinking about, but primarily pallets.
Alrighty, well. Thank you. Uh, what are you guys doing there now?
As of now, it's not being used at all, so it hasn't been in use for years and um that's a part of the reason why we've decided. To uh why we're, why we're deciding to change it. It's because there was no use for us as a commercial entity. Um, and and given that it's so close to the to the um tracks, we also just think it's a little bit of. Uh, a hazard. So we thought this is better. There's gonna be less traffic in that area if it's if it's um dedicated. To uh warehouse distribution instead of being a commercial entity.
How long have you owned?
How long has he owned it? I think for a few years now.
That's the old siding.
Say that again. Yes.
Anyone?
He's never done anything with it on his view.
Oh, no, no, it hasn't been. It's been out of um out of commission. There's been no use uh whatsoever.
They can't currently, Mara, they can't do what they're proposing to do there?
Sorry, say it again.
Do what they're proposing to do there. I mean, it was an old siding world before. So they're proposing to do warehousing and distribution.
Right.
So why can't they do that there now?
I think it was re, it was rezoned and now it's been rezoned again. I think it was originally, if I remember correctly. Um, I think it was originally uh B three, then it went to M one and now we're requesting that I go back or sorry, we, it was M one. Changed to B three and now we're requesting that it goes back to M one. Yeah.
So I was gonna say, I think that's part of the entertainment overlay district, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and alright, and then of course it wasn't necessarily grandfathered in because it was vacant for some time, right? Or am I?
Right.
Okay.
Been vacant for a while now.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Why, why take the the entrance from Michigan Avenue? And do the entrance on Middle Belt under the Vado? That's gonna create.
If I recall.
I left, learn, they may turn it left right there is uh impossible.
I recall correctly, that was a recommendation that the planning commission gave to our. It was when um Jamie was was uh the the city planner. That was a recommendation that he provided for uh the architect. And he said it was um, there were, there was a technical reason and um but for that I maybe, Mark, to it.
So you're splitting the lot? You're splitting the entire lot. That's what you're saying. So you, you have Michigan Avenue that's included that. So you're splitting and it's gonna become. Michigan Avenue address and in the middle boat address. That's what, that was happening.
Yes, there'll be two different, there'll be two separate parcels. Um, but. Maybe the, and I can, I can follow up with the, with the response, but maybe the architect Ted could speak better to that. Ted was actually supposed to be in attendance today. But he he had an emergency come up, but he's the one that prepared um the uh the architects who prepared the uh land division application and I prepared the rezoning app. So there was, there were technical reasons as to why he was doing it that way. It was in accordance to what Jamie had had asked of him. Um, and so uh they were doing it in accordance to what was um requested.
You want to speak to that, Mark?
Yeah.
Sure, um, while I can't speak to what planner Goran Flo uh was thinking during this recommendation, I can only assume since I was. Inherited this project that we are, we intend to keep industrial uses. Um, and traffic off of Michigan Avenue and concentrate it more along Middle Belt. To help create that focused entertainment district that the master plan seeks to provide.
Now, with questions and clarity on that, and I'm looking at the flow of traffic and where that is under the railroad. We, and and just when you speak of industrial traffic. That creep, and this is just me, you correct me if I'm wrong, that actually creates the issue because Middle Bell, you had a stoplight there. And then you have the entrance about what? A couple hundred feet away from the stoplight and the gas station. So if you have industrial trucks turning in off of Middle Bell up to go up that hill to siding where you're stopping traffic, you're like really uh hindering. Versus if it was turning in off of Middle Bell and or I know there's a lane right there for the turning light. Um, I would actually like more clarity on that and I'm not blaming anybody, you know, for that, but I would actually like more clarity because that's a bit confusing being that. Uh, I think that light and we got construction there right now and I counted because I got stuck in traffic and I was very upset. I had to be here at City Hall. Me and Troy both had to be here at City Hall. I think that light lasted about fifteen to twenty seconds.
It does, it does.
It does fifteen, twenty seconds and that's a high traveled area. So if that was a thought, I want more clarity on that, why we would be diverting industrial traffic, semis and box trucks off of Middle Belt? Especially when the high school used to be there.
Yeah.
Um. Versus off of Michigan Avenue, you'd have more. Uh, footage if you were all the way down back to Henry Ruff, if if there's a delay in traffic versus a delay.
Yeah, they don't get many of that because actually that's not a broken line. It's solid line going under the Vado whereas there's no left turn there, a no left turn, call it south, wasn't no left turn.
They did, they do have an existing exit and entrance off of Middleboat.
Right.
It's always been there.
Yes, always been there.
What they used to do. What's gonna happen? You had the, you had the, 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 um, what was that that was sitting up there? The fish place that used to sit up there?
Yeah, fish man, right.
Now, uh. Plus you had the siding world traffic that was born there, so.
Well, they loading zones came off uh Michigan.
A load, load came off Michigan, everything came off Michigan.
That's the super long driveway. The real short was off Middle Dogg, that's here.
I agree.
And only, I also only bring that up too because I've had constituents ask, how can we get the? Um. No turning on red between those certain hour signs removed and that is not a city governed. Choice that is by the Michigan Department of Transportation. And they were just talking about trying to cross that. You got the buses and all of that there. So that that was, that was my only concern. It's not a problem, but I would like more clarity on that.
Do you think that it'll? Sorry, go ahead. Um, yeah, check. So right now we don't have a site plan in front of us.
Okay.
So we, like, one component, part of the site plan review, as you guys are familiar, is to offer. Recommendation from engineering and from planning perspective on how we can increase the circulation. Um, like vehicle circulation of the site and enhance that. So we can consider that during our site plan when, if. We receive a site plan. Um, but right now the request is to rezone.
Got you. I got you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I.
Yes, sorry.
I would special land use, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. That's why I couldn't speak to it.
Alrighty.
That is something that we will definitely look into and I can follow up with.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, we are in the public hearing for rezoning. So at this particular time, if there's nothing else from the commission. We can go ahead and turn this over to the public for any questions, comments, or concerns. So is there anyone from the general public who wishes to speak to these matters? Uh, about three thousand Middle Belt Road, the old siding world rezoning from B three, general business district to M one light industrial district. It looks like we have one.
Yes, Andrew Wathlin, Representative. I have a question because uh I believe the city council last year, year before last. Vetoed the rezoning from B three. To M one in that same area. I believe it's the gentleman that owns the. Uh, furniture store there. He wanted to change it to M one?
Yes.
Okay, and the council uh denied that request.
And then it come before this council. Did it come before the council before us?
Yeah, it came before us. It was a, remember it was a, it was with the ordinance, some ordinance changes. And.
Reszone from B three because he wanted to grow from the furniture place.
Right, it was a uh.
I think the rezoning came.
Not through the planning commission.
It hasn't come to us.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, it was seven two boat.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I believe uh, so there is precedent for not rezoning in that area. And I um, I do have another question, but you kind of retained one of your other things.
One of the other items?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have to wait till we get, no, I'm sorry, it's not this address, right?
Setting you knew.
Just for clarity, I think, and I'm trying to recall that. I think it was a. Every zoning for ordinance or wha- whatever it might have been, it was like a seven two vote. It passed at. Planning commission level, but it didn't pass the city council. And I think at that time, they actually had stated what the intent was, which pertained to something with the cannabis industry, yes.
Yes.
Um.
But there is precedent there for not rezoning in that area. Now, I don't know how that fits in with the master plan, but I know a lot of things are going against the master plan when it comes to a lot of these things. So just bear in mind, there is that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speak to the president. That precedent would actually only apply to city council. It wouldn't apply to planning commission and it'd only apply in the case if city, if um. They were asking to uh to use it as a cultivating center. So if they're not, if it goes to city council and they don't ask to use it as a cultivation center, that precedent actually wouldn't follow.
No, no, we're completely aware of that. Thank you. Um, looks like we have another person or two more?
Hi, um, Kim Howard as resident. As far as our rezoning, did we have a, did they go to a rezoning board? Because we do have a rezoning board that seems to not be.
You're talking about the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Um, so basically I, uh, and and Mara can correct me on that if I'm wrong. When stuff goes to the Z B A, that's because they're appealing it because it was denied.
Okay, okay. So we don't have anything prior to just make sure things are going before it comes to you guys as far as rezoning?
To my understanding, as long as it, everything is, it fits in the guidelines and the parameters when it comes to us for rezoning. Um, is based on us to vote it up or down to recommend it to council. It still comes to city council, but there's no appeal. That's when it will go to the Z B A.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, I thought I had seen someone else stand up prior to uh um. Kim Howard coming up.
Mayor Proton Howard.
Real short.
I'm ready.
On the uh, I think that's what James was getting to when he uh suggested that you can't use that uh entrance on Michigan Avenue is to have. A buffer site between Michigan Avenue and this next site. Um, which considers, I think takes into account the fact that the other property which was denied rezoning uh on the basis of why was denied rezoning. Uh, because there was a buffer. So theoretically, if you split. Even the furniture parcel into a creative easement, you could rezone the back parcel. There's, there's, you know, support for that, but not the entire parcel. Got you, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, is there any? Please approach, boy. Hi.
Uh, yes, this, the rezoning that you guys, my name is Wilhelmina Baldwin.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the rezoning that you guys are planning, it will not affect traffic. Going to the airport because Middle Belt is a very main street to the airport.
So we're building a control industrial, it's gonna be, if there's actually gonna be less traffic because if it was a partial or remain commercial, there would be more traffic. Given that it's industrial.
Okay, okay, that out, that that's was very, I mean, crossing my mind because there are a lot of people. Who do not drive freeway.
Yeah.
And that is a straight shot to the airport.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak at this time during the public hearing? To the rezoning from B three general business district to M one light industrial district at three thousand Middle Belt Road. Normally, yes, you do have to come to the podium. Um, what's your name for the record, ma'am? Renee, alright, thank you. Um. Would you like to respond to that, please?
Right. Oh, we're gonna use it as a warehouse distribution center to distribute pallets.
Pallets. That area is very. I don't think that both. What they said, you know. I'm just saying, I'm saying it's naturally. And very good, right, that you're. And pallets.
But if it remains commercial and it's used as a commercial entity like it's owned currently, then there would actually be a lot more traffic because you'd have people coming in and out.
But it's already.
Yeah. But this way it'll reduce, so the purpose that it's gonna be used for now will reduce the amount of traffic.
It's not what we do.
It will as opposed to allowing it to remain commercial.
I don't. Like you guys have every bound area of traffic, yes. And we want, you know, what go there that will be more.
So we're already, one, we're already there, right? But two, the reason why that's not true is because again, if it remains commercial, it's going to. Increase. Um, and if it's used as a commercial entity, it's gonna increase the amount of traffic there as opposed to using it as an industrial building, which. Um, as everyone knows, there's a lot less traffic involved with having it be industrial than if it were to stay commercial as it is now. So the way in which we're changing it, and that's. Again, granted, it's better than leaving it without any use at all and just being a vacant building. So what you're proposing to make sure that it remains the same is that it remain a vacant built. But that doesn't allow for um any additional jobs. It doesn't allow for um any use of the building and it really just allows for a blighted property to remain on the. On the land without serving any use whatsoever. So at this, I'm requesting that we rezone it to a use that actually would bring in less traffic than if it were to operate as. A commercial entity, which is what it's currently zoned for.
They obviously have that, the whole place.
You're, you're talking about across the street? Those, yeah, you're talking about the recycling and metal and all that. That's on the opposite side of the street. Not behind the gap. We're talking about behind the gas station. Same side as this, where Inks for High used to be.
It's killed, it's, that's my thing.
Yes. No, and I understand, and the reason I asked about with the Middle Bell entrance and the Michigan Avenue entrance, because there's two of them. But from what um the applicant or the representative for applicant was explaining was that if it remain commercial, then you get both. Traffic like me and you as average citizens going up there and commer- and truck traffic industrial. But in this rezoning, um, and I'm just trying to explain it. I'm not buying for anybody. It would only be truck traffic bringing pallets back and forth. Then myself and you would not be able to go up there to purchase or drop off anything. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Can you rephrase that for me? You said?
You know, if someone or the citizen can't go there to purpose, why are we putting?
Well, they just want to use it for industrial purposes for the importing and exporting of pallets. I'm not sure.
Say import and export.
A pallet, yes, as a distribution site. But hold on, hold on one second, sir.
She got a order, she should be at the podium.
Come on, please approach, please approach, buddy, for me.
Exactly.
If they're able to use it or if it's a purpose and not really just the property that's vacant.
Alright, hold on, hold on one second. Can you approach buddy for me so everybody can hear you because we just, yeah, we, yes. We have my phone, they can't pick you up. I have my media director. He can't hear anything you're saying. So we want, we want the, we want everybody to be able to hear. Okay, thank you. Alrighty, um, anybody else from the general public, please approach uh the podium, state your name for the record. I know we have a couple. I saw a couple hands go up, so please approach.
Juan Bradford, resident of the city of Inksir. I think it might be helpful for the uh community to hear what your projection of. Traffic coming in and out of this building would possibly be. Uh, i- it's one thing to say whatever about Michigan Avenue or uh that pertains to Inks Road. The concern is, what's the flow? Will it cause bottlenecking? Do you project they'll be in there five, six, seven, ten times a day, two times a day? That might be kind of important to know.
Thanks. So at the. We don't have a very high, um, we don't have a, a. It's a confirmed production yet, production yet. Um, but we, we um anticipate there being a, a few trucks a week. there being a few trucks a week, it's not going to be anything excessive or like, you know, ten trucks going in and out and within the day. Um, that's not, uh, that's not the intent.
Um, well, and what are just, for clarity purposes, hours operation? Are you ready to approach her? Ninety-six p.m., okay, thank you.
Greetings.
Good evening.
Good evening, Akindalay Akinyemi, Inks the resident. My question is, this is a warehouse distribution? Are you trying to use it as warehouse distribution? To import and export pallets, is that what I heard? Is that all in turn, is no food or any kind of produce or any kind of, any kind of goods involved? Just pallets? Okay, that was my question, thank you.
No problem, thank you. And then, and just keep in mind, right now it's just rezoning, this is not site plan review or special annuals, so should any of that change, you know, at that particular time, this, it will be back before this body to uh, and city councils and consider. Is there anyone else from the general public at this time that wishes to speak to these matters? So I see another hand.
Greetings, Timothy Williams, citizen. What time of day you are having notice your traffic coming in? There's a certain time in the evening, there, there's a, that's rush hour traffic. And there's a lot of traffic right now, well, all the destruction going on. In, there's a lot of traffic going from Middleborough almost all the way back to uh, Avondale. So, but now without that destruction, there's still a lot of traffic that goes all the way back to your New Rec Center. So, so can you tell us?
Yes.
I just wanted to know what those other purposes.
Are you speaking of the final, okay. All right, an applicant is right behind, or represented for applicants right behind you.
Okay, well, whoever can answer that question, go ahead.
All right. So the site indicated that there are four stalls, so four shelves within phase two. So we assume that there's going to be three other retailers, general, commercial retailers, non marijuana related. And then one stall is going to be connected to the existing building, which will be part of the provisioning center and adult use retailer. So there'll be three others stored, right?
But no one knows what those will be.
No, it could be like a Subway or, you know, a city joint.
So you're proving something, you don't.
Well, we cannot dictate what business is.
Well, I'm not saying you have to dictate, I'm just saying.
Hold on one second, let me let her finish.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not saying you have to dictate what they put in here. It's like seeing that if it's coming in your city, you would like to know what to get.
I'm just speaking from, is I mean.
No, I'm speaking from, I want to know what it is in my city.
All right, well, let's do this.
No, no, I'm going on now, because I have a couple of it.
All right, we're ready.
Um, I'm seeing here, one, two, three, four different things that are including medical marijuana.
Okay, hold on one second, we're in public here for.
Yeah, and it's one of the ones that says miracle, medical marijuana, I can't address that?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's what I'm getting ready to do.
Back.
Um, I thought we only had three medical marijuana. But I was informed recently that we went to Buffers instead of Noggin's, that it took the cap off of marijuana, I mean medical. I don't remember, or I don't recall that happening at all, because I thought when we changed the ordinance, you had to go through public hearings, you had to go through the rewrites, you had to go do the other things. So how did this come to pass? It's my question.
All right, Mara, do you wish to, or I'm sorry, can you address that?
Uh, so I, we would need to refer to the city attorney. But the city attorney did provide me with an adopted chapter 124 code ordinance. And I do know that was communicated, this chapter 124, are you familiar with this?
Yeah, we remember going through.
So I took point before.
It's been, I thought that was just. That was really.
You might need to speak a little bit louder for me.
It didn't deal with medical, oh.
Okay, so it was just recreational?
Yeah, that was, that was my impression at the time, in five years. Someone tell me how we went from three to unlimited.
Chapter 124 involves marijuana business license, so from that, it's both medical and adult use retailer. No buffering standards are listed within this chapter 124. The buffering standards are listed in the zoning ordinance as additional use for these standards for each provisioning center and adult use retailer.
Yeah, I guess more clarity on that, I just shoot you, but I had, I did speak to the city attorney earlier, I thought he was going to be here tonight. The reason I say, I guess, more clarity because, and I guess we need to review what the final language was that we voted on, because from what I understood, it was just recreational. But the medical standard is saying that three.
And that was my understanding too, that if, at some point, this entire situation got kind of polluted some kind of way and we missed something, then that should be addressed, I shouldn't just suddenly see, you know, because I've been, we said, when we first tried this, it was to pay the medical with the recreational, so they would only be three. And that, they said, rather than doing numbers, rather than putting caps, that bumpers would be that. And now that I find out bumpers include everything, and that was not the intent. Hello?
Yes. We came last week, uh, we talked about natural buffers and things that nature, but I don't think we talked about a cap or anything being removed off of medical. Because I know medical was different, then recreational came into play, and from my understanding, marijuana business license, the part that we were amended was recreational only, I mean, I didn't see a reason why we would amend medical, because it was no benefit for the city. This reason being, because the excise tax moved over per the state of Michigan from medical to recreation. They said the cities can no longer capitalize off of that, so it's really no benefit outside of the property tax and application. For medical, right.
We need to.
The medical. Right.
We need to. Okay, one other thing, it's there, okay, that's it.
All right, ma'am, please approach. And it's under your name for direct, please.
I'm trying to. And in my opinion, a more positive though. These threats can be so nature long enough. And. Man, we got. Easter has been so many long enough, and 2025 is here to change. Time flies and I think. Like every other thing, people want to stop, they'll stop here. I think it's a positive. Stop the reason of a negative.
All right, thank you, thank you. Does anyone else in the general public wish to speak to these matters? I guess you're sitting in the side. Everybody just. In, all the first, last. I don't like the. And. A timeline of everything. Not have. A conversation.
I do not have a list of all marijuana businesses.
It almost said related to how, how it works in. Back to the check, it means. What type of businesses they are, just like.
It is recorded for public, thank you to our media director.
Now, notice those questions, as it relates to. So. It's on the screen. Thank you, thanks to us folks, we had. I mean. Talking about what we done and had the same type of presentation for next. It sounds like a lot of misinformation. Or things added in certain directions, like there's something just happened overnight. That will bear a lot of attention to the council. Right, you know, of course, I have a fair, so like, you know, it's all come back to do like something that we've done, or something that we've. Something that, um, has been done, you know, from lack of work, them actually sitting, containing this issue. So make sure that, you know, one, we need to probably, minutes from when this vote is taken. So, you know, the clerk was still last time across, so we make sure we give back to her. Then that way, when this call before council, everybody, we have a presentation. Look, there's minutes, we'll discuss the Yates, the Napes, and then, you know, if these, if these items are recommended, pass this by.
Yeah, we can discuss further presentations before the council.
Yes.
I just want to let you know that a presentation was given, memorandum on marijuana business license process within the city. And it was reported, so that is available already, I shared my screen during the presentation. And in the presentation, we included the moratorium background, the background on the different amendments that happened, which we did bring up, that room in the room, the chapter 124 revision that took place in September 2020. And chapter 124 talks about the cap on the marijuana reading centers. And the revisions removed the cap on marijuana reading centers. So that's the process, that's the history of amendments. And then we talked about the existing process and how it can improve the existing process. We talked about definitions of all types of marijuana facilities. And then I talked about the different standards that we use to approve or deny business license or special lane use. And then where marijuana is permitted as a special lane use within the zoning district.
Also addressed the fact that these are just part of the processes in relation to the general work that you're doing. And how we accept applications for marijuana, being that we don't have, um, per se, a timeline or timestamp, something like this. Or the first in line, or. Like. Actually, they're, they're easy. Process and this typical, like, see how that affects. We talk about. The conundrum was happening. And that's, it has nothing to do with this council, the last council. Basically, so we had fifteen. Pretty much outside of. Back to. And bumpers, that's on the. Chain, how we take an application. So really, you know, yeah, we, basically the process, you apply to the city clerk, you have to address what should go through, or what stuff should we go through, relates to planning department, relates to what they need. Background checks, all that stuff. I don't want to be at the adoration, okay, actually pre-qualify the state, I think that's maybe, that's something that we have. I mean, it's a part of the application process, you requalify from the state. Requalification from the state.
I don't know all the detail that the city clerk office takes, but they do perform a background check. And some document from the state, a license from the state is required to obtain a business license.
So you have that prequalification from the state in order to, to get to you on the playing part. For you to go through, what you can do, that's a recommendation, especially based off of. And then it comes to the planning commission or recommendation to the council, especially. Right. At this level, and I want to make sure we get clarity together, talking about people in the room. There's a lot of misinformation going on, that we need to make sure we're talking, educating. Of course, we, we, you know, it's the issue that we hit, however. For law, you know, the state is actually encouraging medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. Um, at the same time, you know, that the city of East is in relation to our size and the demographics, all that stuff. However, we know that applicants to the city here, that this is kind of like a race to the finish line. But one of the applicants, you have like three, four applicants in the same row. On first of the process, then it knocks out the other, as that been talked about. And everybody has not seen on that, so.
You know, when we look at all these applicants, they may not even make it through, based off of what we're talking about right now.
Mr. Mayor, hold on one second, I hear something. Sorry, it's on.
Is that echoing us, or is that? I know, I can't say, is it echoing us, or is that?
You probably, you probably got the volume, turn the volume down to him on the phone.
Yeah, and we, so for the record, there was an issue with Zoom, Zoom crashed. And that's why he's broadcasting from there, but I didn't know if it was echoing us, or if that was someone speaking.
Yeah, you can hear that back.
It's no problem, I just wanted to confirm.
No, no, that's good, I appreciate that. I'm not trying to take too much time, I just think that, you know, fairness, especially for the general public, from our citizens and our stakeholders within the community. Business owners within the community and people that pay taxes here, all of us working together in the community. We need to have some clarity, and clarity comes with conversation and, and, and having the right information. And us all sharing the right information, and people, you know, of course, you know, in positions, you know, don't, there's just not, have, don't have an understanding, we need to have an understanding. You know, when we're making these decisions.
I, I think one of the things that has been starting to be talked about throughout the community, if you will. Um, we had brought up at a council meeting, one was with the micro business. And it was basically a social equity program that was put in place for the little man to be able to get in the game.
Right.
But still, they don't, still, they don't have the same amount of capital that someone else who would have a regular dispensary would have. And of course, they'll be taking their time, slow and steady, but then you got The hair who could race to the finish line to get done and knock them out. Um, just that little bit of fairness with other applicants, you know, throughout the city.
For sure.
And I think one of the things people were talking about, the process in general.
Yeah.
Of it needing to be revamped.
Yeah.
So that. You don't have, if you will, and I'm just using this as an example, so don't nobody quote me on it, run out, say Stephen said X, Y, and Z. But ten applicants in the pipeline, and the two who applied at the last day jumped to the finish line and knocked everybody else out because, you know.
They didn't get finished with their stuff.
Right, because they might not have had the capital, they might have got other things that came into play. For instance, county stepped in and said, you need to redo this, or the state stepped in and said, you need to redo that. Um, yeah, and it can happen, especially, and this process is expensive, you know that. Um, and, and just for the record, too, I did, I was sitting here recollecting on what we were talking about. And then it dawned on me, I know that marijuana business license amendment that came before city council and planning commission. It was a tie, and then it got split. So whatever did get passed in that, whether a cap was removed and it was changed to natural buffers and stuff, I think that's probably where the confusion is coming up. Because whatever passed, passed, whether we voted for it or not, certain council people voted for it or not. It's still passed, so whatever got passed, passed, and in our heads, we were thinking one way. But that's not what got passed. A di- a, a, a different amendment got passed on what we were particularly proposing, so I think that's why, um. We're stuck on. Where our mindset was versus what actually got passed before us, that's why we were talking about looking at the minutes and everything like that. Uh, I guess a review of the final draft would need to be. So that everybody's on the same.
And I appreciate it, but you know, what the comment is, but if it's the, if it's the law of the land, it's the law of the land, so. What we need to do is we can come back to our body, to the council body, and we can work on that, you know. Like, you know, to see how we can have a meeting, but we see that the, the desires there, you know, at the same time, it's like, you know. S- we don't have to go to war for it, we need to have some balance.
So we can do a review, that's fine.
That's, that's what I think that we need to do, is a council, so we can really, you know, tie in with one another. Because we know that we all don't agree, so you have a councilmatic body, you have seven votes there, you know, or six, and then. The mayor is a tie vote, you know, either way. So, yeah, I think it's important, it's going to be important for, especially as we move through this process. Believe me, I have to talk about.
We don't have. Last minutes from the last meeting, because I thought it was brought up that. What we in the process now is that the applicant is, uh, in a race to finish, who, who finish first.
Right, and that's, that's.
And I think that was in the minutes.
Yeah, man, and that's even, that's terrible, I mean, just as a business owner, it's like, you know, the money that you spend and then. Somebody get there and knock you out, but you know, that's a risk you take.
Right.
That was something that was talking, that's what we're talking about is to.
Talking about all, everything that you guys are talking about.
Yeah.
I'd like to really stay to, to, to the community. Um, to our residents. We behoove you to attend most of the meetings and not just here, come to a meeting here and there. I think that you will be more informed, so you can pass it on correctly. Because I think a lot of times people, uh, come to one meeting and they don't come next to the next six meetings. So, we have addressed everything that you're talking about tonight. And I think we're really getting off of the subject, except if we had a parliamentarian in the room, they probably would say point of order. But because we know that our residents are very sensitive to this new. Medical industry that we're in. Or we're not really here for the, the, your, your questions that you have. But secondly, everything that you guys talked about with, with anybody coming first and they get through with their stuff first. We talked about all of that, when you talk about buffers and when you talk about how many. Medical facilities we're going to have in the community, that was the reason why they did that because of the buffers is going to stop it. At some point, you can only have so many. And it's only in a particular district, if I'm correct, right?
Well, at this point, it's all over the city.
It's not all over the city, because you can't do it in a residential area, can you?
Okay, well. I'm three quarters half in the city.
So I'm just saying, so.
Because we're doing it off natural buffers.
We're going off natural buffer.
With zoning.
With the zoning.
Right.
Right, so. That was why they took the cap off, because the buffer handled that.
To a certain extent. Because capping, I know in other communities, and I'm just going to use, I'm sorry, let, let's, let's read the word. We are in the public hearing for the, oh, yeah, redirect, because I, that, that was my fault, I should have been redirecting.
Yeah, that's my fault, thank you.
And we'll do this under this length.
Because we kept, because we kept talking about it, so I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, because it is, it's eight twenty, it's eight twenty-two. We'll be here a bit. All right, I'm sorry, we are at the public hearing still, item C, five C. Uh, yes, five C for the property at two nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue, special land use, adult use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision center at that location. Is there anyone else for the general public who wish to speak to these matters, and if not, is there anything else from the general body who would speak to these matters at this location? And commissioners, just make a note for, you know, whatever you wanted to discuss at that particular time under this length, so we can make sure we expand upon it, I just don't want to. Um. I don't want to be the one to do it again, and go off topic. Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, no, not wrong. Is there support?
Support.
Has been properly moved by Mayor Wimbley, is supported by Commissioner Davis. All the favor to the public hearing?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes, the public hearing is now closed for item five C. We're down to item five D, case number twenty-two dash eleven, special land use. Adult use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision center at two nine seven zero nine Michigan Avenue. The floor is open for motion to open the public hearing.
Motion open the public hearing.
Is there property moved, is supported, has been properly moved by Commissioner Davis, is supported by Mayor Wimbley. Is there any? Is there any further discuss, I'm sorry, uh, all the favor? All right, all the polls. The public hearing is now over. Mara, you have the floor.
The cleaning department reviewed this application, uh, for site plan and special ranges consideration. John McMullen of Extreme Building and Design is the applicant on behalf of Mustang Properties Incorporated. They propose to construct a five thousand two hundred fifty-six square foot masonry building. For a marijuana provisioning center and adult use retailer. As well as a general non-marijuana retail operation on the point nine three acre site. Located south of Michigan Avenue to Henry Ruff and Middle Belt. More information on the project, sir?
Okay, south of Michigan Avenue, and you said where?
Between Henry Ruff and Middle Belt.
Right, I'm, I'm just looking at that address, where, where would that be, in front of the subs, the DT substation? Because.
What do we say, what's, what's the address?
Two nine seven zero nine.
Two nine seven zero nine, it's going to be, um. According to what I have, is the top flight, the owner, the top flight is between.
I don't think that would be the entertainment club, flight club.
That's what it came up when I looked it up.
Right, same here, that's why I'm asking like where that space is, because that wouldn't even be the parking lot or in front of the substation for DT. There you go.
Kate Klaus on behalf of the applicants.
All right, thank you.
We've got a presentation here that should be able to answer your questions and the questions the community had about how this project will benefit.
Okay, great, I was wondering what the easels were when I saw them in the parking lot.
I think the architect addressed the, uh, the questions concerning the exact location of the.
Okay, and sorry, Mara, didn't mean to cut you off, but I was trying to understand it.
It's good to hear from the applicant.
Yes.
Um, Chair?
Yes.
I think it might be best if the applicants were to direct their presentation to the side of the room, so that the whole room could see.
Um, well. When you say aside, do you mean in front of the majority board over there?
To the side, so everyone can.
I want to see it.
Okay. Um, well, two things, Commissioner Daniels.
Want me to change spot?
Yeah, come up here with us, please. Because we don't have that many people, um. I don't know how big. The, uh.
They're three by two.
I just wanted to make sure that the general public can see this as well, that's all.
Hi, how? I'm John McMullen with Extreme Building and Design. Um, I'm contracted to, uh, build a proposed facility. And also working with, uh, the architect on the plans as we see here. Now, the facility at two nine seven oh nine Michigan Avenue is, um, there is an existing, um, business there. And, um, part of the property that's, um. That's owned by the owner, there's an additional three acre parcel that is vacant land. So, um, we're proposing to build on that vacant land for this facility. And the facility, as stated, um, fifty-two hundred square feet, uh, one story building. Four thousand of that, uh, building is, uh, for the medical and recreational. Uh, this, um. I'm sorry, dispensary business, and then the other thousand square feet is for, uh, proposed retail, maybe a coffee shop, uh. Tropical smoothie, that's yet to be determined. Um, but the building itself. Um, as we can see here. This here is the Bay Japan. This is the building that's. The department. And then you have still the last of the Bay Japan left for any time. And also, um, existing building that exists there now. And ample parking spaces.
Commissioners, are you able to see the sketches?
Yeah, I'm good with the sketches, go ahead.
And this is the rendering of the proposed building. As, uh, you can see, uh, we have two, uh, separate distinct, um, entrances for the different business. Uh, the building itself features, um, all high-end, um. Uh, very expensive materials. Uh, we're showing, uh, beautiful crown molding, uh, metal panels, as well as, uh. Uh, wood accents along with stucco and, uh, glass awnings. Similar to, uh, hotel entrance, we want to make it, um, a very, uh, beautiful building. That'll be, um, definitely an asset for that part of, uh, that part of the area.
All right, thank you. Uh, commissioners, uh, first, Mara, I'm sorry, I know I had stopped you in the middle of, when you were getting ready to say anything, do you have anything additional to add before I turn it over to the commissioners?
Um, thank you, so I just wanted to let everyone know. We do need clarification on the address, um, so that's one, I, that's one condition under the site plan. Okay.
Oh.
You're talking about who?
Probably the planning department.
If we're a fool, you guys issue us.
Okay, I was just saying, when you said planning commission, I'm like, we're the commission, so.
So we're using the address to building versus the next. Got you, once, if, if we're a fool, we're in the home.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Mara.
Uh, just one thing I'd like to point out, I see the concept image here, and it's different from what's reported on the site plan. What's reported on the site plan is that the proposed materials for the buildings consist of light dark gray, lit fake masonry. A cement fiber concrete and some brick veneer, all in neutral colors. A red building does not encompass what you proposed in the site.
Well, I think, um, what we are doing here is trying to, um. You know, bring it a little bit more upscale, but, um, but that's something that can be discussed.
Because per our ordinances, I know earth tones and neutral colors and everything like that are, are with, in different zoning ordinances, so I think that would be, need to be.
Yeah, and color's not a problem, color can be adjusted, if, you know, you were looking for conceptual, uh, look kind of like this, but yeah, no, of course, we can. Colors are very negotiable here.
Thank you. Mara, anything additional?
Um, I mean, the only other items that we discussed in the report for special land use. Um. Well, it should be known that the applicant seeks to. Share in ingress egress with the adjacent property, so a condition. Um, is to receive approval to like a, an easement to use the adjacent property. And also, um. Protect the existing tree bed. Along Michigan Avenue, but we can get into further conditions if you'd like.
Say that last part, protect existing.
Existing tree bed during construction along the Michigan Avenue, there are seven long growth trees.
Is that under recommendations or, um? That's under recommendation?
The recommendations for, that was just part of the project summary.
Okay.
Um, and then recommendations for special land use.
Okay.
Are, we found that this applicant met special land use criteria in the zoning ordinance. And there's a list of conditions, one is to acknowledge that the applicants received necessary approvals from also the, also the office of the clerk. Abide by all the requirements, the site plan, these are all things that we've seen before in previous. Site plans and add all the corresponding notes to indicate that it meets the zoning ordinance requirement, like. Um, that the sale and consumption of alcohol will not be on the premise. We've heard all of these listed out previously, if you care for me to listen up again, I can. And provide documentation of a access, a shared access agreement with the property owner, like I mentioned. And provide documentation that the subject site has been properly addressed, and any other comments that is raised by the design review team.
All right, uh, commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns at this time for the applicant as they are before us? Here and then, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the general public. General public, please, you know the protocol, please approach the podium, state your name for the record.
One Bradford, citizen of Inkster. Full disclosure. Um, whoever the leader is of this group that we have in chambers tonight, who's the leader of the group. Are you, or are you in any relationship with the existing building that's on that property right now, are you the owner?
Yeah.
There is a building that's there called, I think, the. Flight Club or. Are you the owner of that business? Do you have relationship, business relationship with that entity? You work there, what is your? What is your title? You're the CEO, so you're the owner, so you're, you're running that business. Will it be a merged entity once this is developed? But there will be a relationship.
Access.
And is that why the cooperation is there for access to the drive? Because you're the, you're pretty much the same entity?
Yeah.
Got you, okay.
All right, thank you. For it is, yes, absolutely.
Good evening, your honors. My name is Fred Cap. I have worked in the seat of Inkster for about sixteen years now, some of you know me. Uh, I'm very excited for the unique opportunity to open a business in the city. Business of my own in the city, can be a bigger part of the community than is already Inkster. Uh, I would like to say, uh, share some exciting plans that will benefit the city, if, if you find it, you can prove us. Uh, we are committed to donating a hundred thousand dollars for fire, police, and safety. Every year for the city to use it since season's fit. Uh, we hope to be a leader in the cannabis industry in the city of Inkster. And then we challenge the other spenders, dispensaries, uh, in the city to match our commitment to the city. Uh, we intend to create, uh, numerous employment opportunities at the location, reserve jobs specifically for Inkster residents. Uh, we intend on hiring private security personnel, we also, uh, give the City of Inkster Police Department, uh, those positions first and foremost if they choose to take them. We also give the City of Inkster Police Department those positions first and foremost if they choose to take them. And then lastly, I am already approved through the state for rec and medical contingent on a building. If I had a building today, I could open tomorrow. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to my proposal.
Thank you. I don't want you to get people excited in the city of Inkster when you say you're committed to public safety and they'll go through it now.
I'm willing to stick to it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank your honors for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name's Alan Markovitz.
Wanted you to speak a little bit more into the mic. Oh, thank you.
How we doing now? Everybody better? Okay, we'll start again. So, good evening. I'd like to thank your honors for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Okay, my name's Alan Markovitz. I own the property on the proposed site that this new building will be on. I will be leasing the property and building the new building for Castle Lee Farms, who is the licensee. This project, as you can see, when we can, of course, dial down the colors and make them conform to whatever the city wants us to conform to. But this is basically a conceptual rendering. I believe the project will beautify and will add significant value to the area. You know, it's going to bring future expansion, I believe, to the area. And also new development to our fair city, which is much needed on the major thoroughfare of Michigan Avenue. Based on the business model and the pre-approval, which this applicant already has from the state of Michigan. I believe that this will be successful, and I believe that the expense that I will incur will be warranted based on him already being approved for the building, because it's going to be quite expensive for me to build this beautiful detailed building. And by him already qualified, I know that he can go in and operate. So that, to me, was very important. Also, the secondary retail, I've already been in touch with Starbucks, also with Tropical Smoothie, and also others that would like to go into this new facility. The other thing is, I think bringing this will act as a catalyst for other entrepreneurs to come in, that they see there's new building and new development. Sometimes, it takes sometimes a new business, which we're all new to, to get traditional businesses to come in. But once they see that there's major expansion and money being spent, they feel, okay, there must be something here. So we believe we're entering a new market and an opportunity for other entrepreneurs and more traditional businesses to come in and say, they spent a lot of money. We feel that sometimes they're not the first to want to come in. So we feel we're being a gateway for other businesses to come into the city. So I think when you put new buildings, new taxes, that are going to come in, it encourages other businesses. And I think that's very important. Another issue is that, you know, I've been a member of Inkster and a proud member. I've been here for twenty-five years, longer than a lot of residents have been here. I mean, and I've been here through up and down times and stuck it out. And I got to tell you, it's a great community. I think it's misunderstood, it's underrated. And I got to tell you, I think the city is ready to go. We just have to put our nose to the grindstone and set an example for us to really go. So I think, I believe that the opportunities are here now. And I think our city has got a great future, and I think this is a good start. And I want to thank you very, very much for listening to us, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess I'll follow up on that again in a different way and say, don't come before us dangling steak in our face, talking about these tantalizing opportunities in Starbucks and Tropical Cafe, because our citizens are going to be calling us and saying, where are these entities at? I'm ready to go.
Okay, I've been here twenty-five years, and the people who know me, if I say it's going to happen, it happens.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm just letting you know.
I think you know who I am as well.
I'm thirty-four, so twenty-five years, portion of my life.
You're on training wheels when I was rolling here, right? No, I, I, I feel very confident about this, and I think it's a great thing.
No, and in all seriousness, I say that because different entities or organizations have come before us. And this is just in general terms, and they say they are a subsidiary of something. And we've had residents and different elected officials ask, well, why can't you bring that entity here instead of what you're proposing? And there's been no response. And so when those types of things get dangled before us and we get excited or say, wow, we may be finally moving in a direction where we could have an entity that's out in Dearborn Heights or West Bloomfield or Beverly Hills, we look forward to that type of expansion. So, thank you.
Well, being here twenty-five years in business, I think I have a proven record here, and it's almost sounding my second home. I've been here longer than, I've been to other places and other businesses. So I have faith in the community that it's on its way. That's why I'm still here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I didn't know if anyone else from your group wishes to speak. If not, then we'll turn it back over to the general public. For anybody who's out there, and we did have Mr. Bradford come up and speak, that wants to speak right now during the public hearing.
Turn the picture around so the people can see.
I'll turn the picture around so people can see, and then Mara, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to report that Planning Department received a public inquiry or a public comment from a resident on this property. So Chair, do you wish me to share?
Yes, please.
Okay.
To the record.
So Luciana Adriana Miles, an Inkster resident from two, I'm sorry. Oh, she didn't specify, or they didn't specify. Is opposed to two nine seven zero nine Michigan Avenue development, marijuana business development. Because they already have a dispensary on Michigan Avenue in Cherry Hill, and they do not need more. This is from Luciana Adrina Miles.
Okay, so Michigan Avenue and Cherry Hill. Michigan Avenue and Cherry Hill run parallel. They don't intersect.
I am not, this is a voicemail that I received, and it's my
Oh, no, you're good.
To report it.
I'm not rebuttling. Alright, well, thank you for that. I know middle Gun Cherry Hill do, and alright. That's all I have to say. Is there anyone else? Thank you for reading that to the record. Is anyone else from the general public?
I want to thank them for their, that beautiful dream. But you say you've been here twenty-five years. What else have you done? I mean, besides the Flight Club for you guys, I mean, Sterling Hankerson, citizen. So I'm just, because I've been here all my life. And I might be your age, I'm not going to say, but I'm going to say I've been here like seventy years at least, okay? So give me seventy. But I'm just confused, alright, because we are in dire straits right now. We need help with fire, police. I mean, have you donated anything to our fire and police lately? I mean, because we're struggling right now. I mean, so.
Yes, please. Answer the question.
Yes, we were very philanthropic with the city. We donated thousands of dollars to many different causes. And we, every quarter, as a matter of fact, from our business, we donate a certain amount to the city. I'll make a call and say, we have some extra money, some dividends. Where would you like me to place it? And we cut the check. And if you'd like, I'd like to, I'll show you all the cancel checks. Okay, the other thing is, and the wonderful police chief is here, is that they had two officers that were cadets, and we just paid to put them through the academy. And I understand they just graduated, and we were only too glad to do that because we get more cops on the road, it's better for me as a business to have more security, and my customers feeling better. So I feel if I can help the community, I'm helping myself.
Is there anyone else from the general public that wishes to speak during this public hearing? So.
Thank you. So I don't have a dog in this race, clearly. I'm responsible for public safety of the city, but many people who have businesses in the city often contribute. They donate, they assist us with different things, events we have in the city, National Night Out, all of those things. Most of the time, people are asking for their name on the sponsorship banners. And Mr. Markovitz has constantly and consistently asked that he not be mentioned, nor his business be mentioned. He wants to do it anonymously. And he's done that. So it's the first time that it's come out that he has been a major supporter of putting police officers through the academy. He writes the check anytime. He knows that there's a need. And he's always there for National Night Out, for the Police Memorial, and for anybody else that asks him for anything, as far as I know. So I have to say that he's been absolutely truthful in what he had to say.
And I'll ask the catch twenty-two as well, because people will say they want to be on a banner or sponsorship for recognition. And then when you ask to be left anonymous, people say, well, what have they, you know, done for the community? And why don't they want to be recognized? So it's a catch twenty-two. So thank you for that.
One Bradford, citizen of the community. I'd like to say I was raised in a way that we thought that marijuana was the dinosaur or the dragon of our society. As I grew older, some of you know my brother Kevin Bradford, who used to support me in a lot of different things. Kevin got very ill. And it showed me by looking at his life and how it deteriorated to the point where he was, he died from his illness. It was a thing called marijuana that changed my mind to see how it helped him deal with his health issue. It caused a paradigm shift in what I believed. And not only that, but we voted that this marijuana thing would come into our city and other cities in our state of Michigan. So I am in a process of shifting. I'm trying to embrace new. If I can share a goofy story, my grandmother, at the time of gas coming into the house, she refused to allow the gas line to come into the house. They had to remove my grandmother and take the gas line into the house. That was her paradigm shift. I think we're at a point where I'm hearing negative, I'm hearing positive. If we stick to something negative while the paradigm is shifting, we'll lose a lot. We'll lose finances, we'll lose the opportunity for those who are doing things illegal to do them things legally. I think we need to really think and search our hearts as far as where we are thinking today. I embrace the gentleman that is doing things not only for his business, his growth, the beauty that he's trying to bring to this community. I embrace you for even giving back. Whether you were in this city for twenty years, five years, or two years, it seems like your heart is speaking for what it is, you're giving back. If a lot of other citizens who are running community businesses did that, I think it would help us get over the hump. If they saw, if they did know who was contributing like that, it might entice them to do the same. So from what I see, I welcome it. Thank you. And I thank you for being transparent when I ask a hard question seemingly. I just wanted to know what the relationship was. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Ruth Williams. I saw with Juan, I agree companies that's been here for sixteen years. And so when you look at things that's being proposed to us, we sitting here hearing all this and that, but yet still, this man been here sixteen years. He can do something for our community talking, to help our police stations and things like that. Because we know for a fact, that's two-thirds of the budget. You know, so if you're proposing, and he's gun-ped, anybody else that you let come in needs to pay that too. They can't, then guess what? Moving on out of our city, because everybody, all of a sudden, where did all these guys come from? Where did they all come from? I mean, I've been here all my life, and all of a sudden, now I'm hearing, come up here to this meeting because want to know what's going on. And I want to know what's going on, and I propose that if we're going to let anything come in our community, we need to have somebody positive in our community. Alan them been here for, I know for a fact. I know for a fact over sixty years, and I'm seventy coming up. He been there most of my life. So I like to see things like that continue in our community.
Is there anyone else from the general public?
Ms. Wilhelmina Baldwin, I am a new citizen as of May first, twenty-two. City of Inkster, and I would like to say I'm very impressed today. Before I moved here, I had a lot of the positive, I mean, negative things coming at me. Why would you want to move there? I heard some terrible things, but I won't release those. I moved anyway because I'm the type of person, you know, I felt like, I said, well, this is what God had for me, the home that I bought. I said, this is what he had for me, so it must have been for a good reason. And it's to help the community in any way that I can. I am a very God-fearing person. And sometimes we're giving missions. I am impressed with the presentations and some of the things I've seen today. I used to sit on the Board of Trustees with the General Retirement System, City of Detroit, Police and Fire Department as well. I was recording secretary, I'm retired. But I appreciate your presentation, it was very well laid out. And I'm feeling more comfortable every day. I think Inkster is a very good city. I couldn't believe the things I heard, because I thought, well, you're going to have problems everywhere. They're everywhere, but nothing like what I heard, and I was impressed. And I'm glad to see, I used to be like him. I had some marijuana for the first time since I was seventeen, I guess, a year ago. My eyes are terrible. I have very bad vision, always have. I've worn glasses since I was nine years old. And that, whatever marijuana I had that night, I was going down Telegraph with my significant other, and I could see street signs. And I frightened him because I says, oh, I can see, I can see. And he was like, what is wrong with you? And I said, I can see, I can see the street signs. And I says, where did you get that marijuana? Go get me some more, because I could really actually see. My vision just, I'm really, anyway, I was so, I don't see well, so when I could see street signs at nighttime going down Telegraph Road, you know, maybe I might have to come up there and get me some medical marijuana for my eyes. That's all I want to say.
That conversation offline. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the general public that wishes to speak during the public hearing about two nine seven zero nine Michigan Avenue? Please approach, sir. Name for the record?
I'm a resident of this district. And I'd just like to say, thank you for building in my district.
How you guys doing? My name is Anthony Anderson. I like to say, one of my things is, I don't, it's time to redirect old politics into the new politics. Because it's a lot of things going on in the city or in the world nowadays that you may not agree with, but in order to move us forward, we have to go forward. Sometimes it's hard for some people to do things that they're not used to. But the way things are moving in the world nowadays, a lot of things are different. A lot of things are, you know, after COVID, the whole world changed. All the things we do have changed, all the way we do commerce has changed, the way we interact with one another has changed. We're wearing masks everywhere. You have to adapt to new. Some people, it's hard for us to adapt to new. But people like them trying to bring commerce into the city, it's kind of big. Marijuana is, is always, sometimes we have to turn a negative into a positive, which is hard for some people to accept. You know, like especially like, you know, not speaking on old or new, but some older folks are harder to accept a lot of new things. You may not want to take advice from a younger person, but some young people are smart. Some, some people have good advice, some people have, some younger folks have good knowledge. A lot of younger folks nowadays are millionaires. You know, because they're not scared of risk, take chances, do things differently than what we were taught. Some things like, some things nowadays, older person can't teach a younger person, because things are different. It's cameras all over the world now. Everybody has a phone with music on it. You know, it's just so much different now, and it's time to move forward instead of progressing backwards. If we don't move forward, we'll never get to where we possibly trying to get to. Inkster, I've been here, I'm forty-five. My whole family's from Inkster, my mother, my father, my granny, my uncle, my grandfather, everybody's from Inkster. And I've not seen a lot of progress here. And I've been here the whole time. I own a home here myself. I've got the Inkster. I've got the Inkster stigma, we've all got the Inkster stigma. And it's time to push the rhetoric away and come in with new feelings for Inkster, new things, new new fulfillment, new new thoughts, new new way you doing things. Take it, take into the consideration of, it's nothing here. Like, I'm I'm still here, we all still here, but there's nothing here. You go, we go one, we go a couple lights up, it's a whole community of businesses, it's flourishing. You go, you go up to Ford Road, you go up to, you cross over to Garden City, you cross over to Westland, you cross over to, like, every which way is commerce, except for here. Except for this little square, this little square. We have nothing. We 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 barely have gas stations. We've lost our schools. We've lost, we've lost the bank. We don't even have a bank.
Sir, I'm going to have to redirect back to the public hearing, based upon two nine seven zero nine.
I'm just saying, like, I'm just saying period, point blank, I'm just saying period as an as a whole.
I get it.
As a whole, like even with two nine, like you're saying, with those guys, they're trying to bring something into the city. That's 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 basically what I'm saying. Is if you're trying, someone's trying to bring new commerce into the city of Inkster, it should be accepted and not rejected. That's basically all I would say.
I I think, I think we've engulfed ourselves with the public in support of this particular item during the public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and ask, is there a motion on the floor? If no one else has anything else to say? The floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing. All right, it's been promptly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Davis. All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. At the call of the chair, I'm going to go ahead and call a five minute recess because we need to use the restroom, ladies and gentlemen. It is nine o'clock. We're going to try to move through this quickly. We will be right back. Please bear with us. Don't need to charge about that.
John Saad, the consultant, prepare the plan. And associate.
Thank you. So I'm proposing the three parcels of Michigan Avenue, and I'm going to do a walkthrough from Trowbridge all the way to Michigan Avenue. I'm expanding the building from twenty-five hundred to forty-eight hundred square feet. I'm going to go with anything the city do require and do ask me to do. And it's going to give a different look for Michigan Avenue where this building, the building right now, it's old, about about three years ago. And after I'm done with it, it's going to give a totally different look.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time for the applicant?
We will be adding to the existing building, yes.
Any further questions, comments, commissioners? You're in, go ahead. This is a public hearing. The general public has an opportunity to speak at this time. Again, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and be concise and direct as the time has passed nine fifteen P M.
One Bradford, citizen of Inkster. I was talking with a few of the applicants, and I was very impressed with what the group came with. The dispensary over on Michigan Avenue. My question to this group is, have you guys operated in the city of Inkster before as a business? You have. Have you ever given to causes to help the police, the fire, or anyone in the city of Inkster? Have you ever done that? And you have, that's good. So I I'm suggesting so that this body can be well aware what they're giving. Is there any way that we can write a clause that they give a percentage, a standby or something, so that this body or the council can allocate those funds and disseminate them into the budget of our city? I don't know if that's a strong arm way of doing it, but I mean, if we all agree on it.
It's still mafia type of stuff.
Absolutely.
If they wish to donate, that is.
Okay, maybe we can put the words in it where it's not running alongside the mafia or whatever. But if people are giving.
Well, I know, let me, let me speak, because I know in Grand Rapids, they they do have something like that, but it's based off of a point system. So basically, you know, they'll say, you know, you you give to the community, you've been in the community so long, you're going to take an older, renovated property, reconvert it, and do something with the community. So they do have something like that. And then in other communities, they have it to where the applicants will actually donate to a nonprofit within the community to, you know, help subsidize the general fund as it relates to whatever. Like, for instance, in the city of Inkster, we have a police and fire foundation that Chief Bratton is actually currently working on to establish. So with the former applicant before this particular applicant saying a hundred dollars, they were going to there. And then go towards, you know, of course subsidizing.
So it sounds like this is not a new idea. This idea has been on the table for some time.
Constitutionally, with the government, we can't necessarily make money. You know, you have to actually have, you know, service for money. So with the Act, the Marijuana Act, that we all agreed on, with seventy percent of the state of Michigan agreed on, that five thousand dollars is the only thing that we can take for licensing fees. So for licensing fees for the first set of licensing fees, and then we can get another five thousand dollars like planning fees.
Can we entertain the point system in this city?
Well, we can't, I think, as we're talking through this, it's a couple of things that we need to to entertain is the whole process.
Yes.
Itself, how we accept applications, what's, you know, in the applications requirements as it relates to community reinvestment, all of that stuff, I think is coming up because we don't want to, you know, again, you know, it's like a reward in a sense, you know, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're doing good business.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, so we can't say, okay, you get, you know, so you can't apply, or you, you know, we won't give you a license. You can't do that.
All right. Thank you.
But we all know Abe Hashem, Abe Hashem all Midwest, Abe, you, I mean, I know you modest, man, but go ahead.
Good afternoon again. My name is Ruth Williams. I'm here on behalf of Abe because he's a great person here in our community. He sits on the chamber board. Also, you know, before COVID hit in nineteen, they had a committee, and this committee promised to send guys to the police academy. They also promised to give to the different organizations here in our community. And I sat in some of these meetings, and they said that they would give to the Code for Kids, they would give to the Toys for Tots, the Goodfellas. You know, you got all these people that we let get in that supposed to been given, now they not given. So these organizations that's out here and been out here for years is suffering. So when we think about what we're doing, we need to make sure that these people is coming to our community. I don't know where from, but we need to make sure the people that's here in our community that's already been here, we need to make sure they stay in their place.
Is there anyone else from the general public during the public hearing that wishes to speak to two six two oh one Michigan Avenue?
Well, again, I have no dog in this race, but I have to say that that there are people who repeatedly give to public safety. And Abe Hashem is one of them. He has continued to support Shop of the Cops, he's continued to put people through the police academy. He's continued to assist us with National Night Out. And when the, what what Commissioner Williams was just talking about, the the coalition or or the the group of marijuana business owners was supposed to come forth and assist, where they failed, Abe Hashem made up for. And way back when all of this started, they beat a lot of these applicants up. They talked about them at the meetings. They gave him a hard time at the meetings, citizens and both commissioners and council people and and all over the place, but one of the things consistently that has happened with Abe is that we don't have to ask him for anything. He offers and and I just want to say that that I second, as a citizen of this city, I second Ruth Williams' thoughts. If they're here, they've been here, and they've been doing what they're supposed to be doing, and they're people that are helping us the way that we know they are. And if they say they're going to do it, they do it. Those are the people we need to look at first.
Sir, Mr. Hashem, you're a gentleman who's holding up the site plan. You can go ahead and relax your. If there's anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak during this time, please feel free to do so. If not. Close the close of here. You're probably moved by Mayor Wibley, is supported by Commissioner Daniels. All in favor? All opposed? The public hearing is now closed. We are down to item F under the public hearings. Case number twenty-two dash fourteen, special land use, adult use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision is centered at one four 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 Inkster Road. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing. Then moved by Mayor Wibley and supported by Commissioner Daniels. All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Mara, you have the floor once again.
Planning Department reviewed the site plan and special land use applications. Ed Mal Mandeja is the applicant and proposes to reuse the existing six hundred eighty square foot vacant building on the point four two acre site as a marijuana provisioning center and adult use retailer. The site is located to the west of Inkster Road between Northwood Drive and Colonial Drive. This review is based on the site plan from June second, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Ms., this is the public hearing. So we could go ahead and hear from the applicants. And commissioners, if you have any questions or comments, and then we'll turn it over to the general public.
Hello, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right, good night, I should say, or evening, probably. My name is Mark Fleming. I'm from the city of Inkster. My family all lives here. My mom played a huge role in the education, helping kids get into college so we can own part of this, part of our city, so we can have opportunities to own part of our city. Part of my background is I started a buildup pharmacy roughly about early twenty fifteen. I was a part of it, I should say, with some of my partners here today. Seven years, we sold it to a national chain for millions of dollars, in which most, a good number was donated back to the city. I have connections. Like she said, it is four acres. My plan is to do a lot more than just the marijuana spot. But of course, the medical marijuana retail, but I do need to start there so I can have money to fund some of these other businesses. I own several properties in the city of Inkster. I'm a great landlord. I also own a real estate company where I have a lot of my clients move from other cities to Inkster. One lady said earlier that Inkster has a stigma. And when I was selling homes or when I am selling homes, I tell people, Inkster stigma, I grew up here, I love it, and we all support each other. So we're more of a family. The stigma that you do here, unfortunately, is not a lot of people from Inkster. And if they are, they're doing something that they shouldn't do, and that'll happen in every city. Sorry. I want to just make sure I tackle everything I wrote down. I pay my property taxes, donate a lot of my own money to develop my properties, making them look good. And then also donate a lot to the youth in the city. Like I said, my mom do have a youth education program that she focuses on getting high school students into colleges. And I spend a lot of my time helping her with that. And then also, of course, she's my, but I do donate to her as well, which benefits some of the students. I know with this opportunity, I can furthermore expand what I can do for Inkster. Unfortunately, there's no black owned dispensaries in the city of Inkster that's mostly black. And I would just like to have an opportunity that I've been trying to do for quite some time now. I promise you will be excited what I can bring to the city. Alongside, like I said, just the marijuana medical retail business. I do have a plan on opening up a burger chains called Burger Burger. I've been teamed up with some of, I don't want to say their names yet, but with some of the big piece of gurus who started in a city very close to us. I think you guys might know what I mean from there. And they're giving me some direction to turn Burger Burger into a chain as well. I want to do the first one here. I just want to help develop some of the vacant lands, some of these vacant buildings, and then hire from people within our city to make it thrive. So maybe hopefully next time, Chair, I can, you know, bring you a sample of what I plan on doing. All right? But I do want to add, I do know a lot of people here from the community. And you guys know, I pretty much aim to please. Okay, I guarantee you what, oh, I can guarantee you what I get from the city, a lot of it will go back into developing the city. Like I said, I do have property here. I want my property value to increase, just like other cities' property values is increasing. And I think this is the opportunity to help me put more money into it to help, you know, the community. All right. Thank you, guys, for your time.
This is the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have anything for the applicant at this time? Here in general public, do you have anything for the applicant at this time? If so, please approach the podium. I know a lot of you are in favor of what's before us tonight. Here you see none? Floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing. Supported by Commissioner Daniels. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're down to item six, A, old business. Case numbers, two two dash zero eight, special land use, drive-through restaurant. Reviewing consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request to city council to drive through restaurant in B three, general business district at two nine two two five dash two nine two four five Michigan Avenue. Ron Syed is the applicant. I apologize if I did not say that correctly. And Mara, can you go ahead and recap on this? I know we had, and this is old business, so go ahead and recap, please.
Yes, sir. The planning commission heard this applicant at the special meeting on June thirteenth. And the planning commission supported the recommendation for approval of the provisioning center and adult use retailer. And the planning commission also approved the site plan for the site. However, the planning commission failed to mention during the meeting if they approve or deny the special land use for the drive-through component of the divided restaurant. So I'm going to reiterate, the restaurant is not part of the marijuana business. It is a separate entity, and the applicant seeks to open a drive-through restaurant at that site. So they require special land use approval to city council.
I'm glad you brought this back before us. Thank you. I think that was just an oversight on our end. So I don't think that we need to hear anything further. The floor is open for a motion. To, I'm sorry. For a motion to approve the special land use recommended to city council. Is this a word?
Support.
Is it promptly moved by Mayor Wibley and supported by Commissioner Daniels? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, thank you. We're down to new. Uh, we're down to new business. Item number seven. Case numbers two-one dash two-three, special land use and two-one-two-two, sorry, two-one dash two-two, site plan review, storage yard at two-nine-one-one Ash Street. Reviewing consideration of recommendation of approval, the special land use request for a storage yard and consideration of approval of the corresponding site plan at two-nine-one-one Ash Street. Anthony Paisley is the applicant. The floor is open for a motion. I actually, I'm sorry, that's, that will be two different ones. So the, um, let's do the first one first, the special land use. The floor is open for it.
Make a motion for a special land use for the two-nine-one-one Ash Street.
This is to approve. Properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Mayor Wibley. I'm just as far as discussion, Mara, is that clear enough for the record?
Yeah.
Alrighty, any further discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, Chair.
Right ahead.
One thing is that the applicant had to provide the material for the eight-foot industrial fence screening, so if the planning commission wish to provide guidance on what type of material you want to see.
Yes, let's discuss that. I'm starting, we talked about that earlier.
And that's what the, he a construction guy, he would, you know, type of fence put up over there was feasible for him, it's his property. I know we're not going with cement.
I think the materials, oh yeah, we're not talking about cement, but we do have a ordinance, you know, that states like no man-made products, and I say he's gonna do that. We have had people in the community who wanna use pallets and different pieces of. And that's not accepted, so we just need to make that clear.
Go from a baking lot, take some more fence, put it up.
Right, we're not gonna piecemeal.
Right.
Um, I guess in this, what Mara said, planning commission needs to provide direction. Even though he is the applicant and then a builder, we need to provide direction of what the commission would like to see. And I wish the applicant was here.
He didn't have that in the site plan?
No.
Okay, so we add something to that to the site plan when we get to the site plan.
Need to do it at this time.
Yeah.
Um, I know in one case, it was just one of those, whatnot, I think it's vinyl, some type of vinyl.
Yeah, but I don't know if we're gonna go with the vinyl in that type of area there because of the weather conditions.
I, and I think it's more so screening purposes, not sound barrier or anything like that.
Right.
Um. I wish that.
I'm just not clear on what he, I'm just not clear on that.
We just put in recommendation that he follow up with us on some type of, you know, three different type of material that he will, he will provide to put up and show it.
But I think, um, like in the past when we did this with the one on Beach Daily. Talked about concrete, talked about vinyl, and what's the other material?
They was going with a hard, a hard so sturdy vinyl, yeah, it is a sturdy vinyl that's not the cheaper vinyl that wouldn't break off. You know, wouldn't break or freeze up and break. That was their vinyl that they was recommending was top of the line.
And and I guess we could say too, because we're talking about a fence and not a wall, concrete would be a wall, not a fence. Um, but we do, we do need to provide. Yeah, and the concrete is very expensive. I'm not saying that, but we do need to provide some direction per ordinance in that area.
What's that? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, does the ordinance, does the ordinance speak on what is allowable and what's not?
Yes.
So why we won't just go by that guideline?
That's what I was gonna say, but what came up was, it talked about no man-made fencing, but it was different materials out there. Um, and we tried to be, what do you wanna call it? Um uh, I can't think of the word, but consider, thank you. Of the applicant's finances and stuff, and I had them put in something super expensive. So that's why vinyl came into play, or something else that's very expensive. I don't know if it's vinyl or not. I can't think of it. Not chain link, cuz that's just, that doesn't screen anything.
We tried to close it off.
Type of the material.
Yeah, well, the chain link screening, I don't know if that's a part, is that?
Yeah, they can use that, they don't speak with the, talking about on Beach Daily because we were trying to go on Beach Daily was gonna look good for that property, also the homeowner's backyard.
And that's why we went with that, that, that vinyl, cuz they got chain link up there, but there's.
Yeah, they were supposed to take all that down and put up a, the, the fence.
Okay, so I guess.
And I really wanna know if he's just running, did you do it for himself or do you wanna do it now? But see, he's not here, and it's just making it really hard for me to.
No, absolutely. And and put it this way, and and then we'll go to Mara. I don't, I know some of the storage facilities that you all probably pass and don't even pay attention to them. Like the one on Merriman and Mr. Stewart, I think it is like that. They have some type of vinyl wall or fencing up there. Um, the ones on Van Born, uh near, uh near Middlebelt. It even though it sits off the road, you know, same thing, it's.
It's front, the frontage.
Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know the term. I think it might be vinyl. I just can't think of the name of it right now. But before, we had this before us with pricing and stuff like that, and we discussed it with the applicant. So that everybody's on the same page.
I remember that. It was a really big one. It was somebody who was really nice. I think that was, um, I think that was, um, the applicant on, um.
Beach Daily.
It was Beach Daily, but it was, it was going behind, and we were saying how it would be very nice for them to hide, hide it from the residents, but it would be hidden, that one.
Well.
Over there, we wanted, it would be control their backyard, so that would look.
Right.
They'd make their backyard look good, and they make the property look good. We're talking about over on Cherry is not a high-traffic area.
Okay.
So if he went up with, uh, broad iron fence or either chain fence, then put it up. Just give him to come back with three stuff that he think he'd like to purchase.
I was just trying to see if I could find the name, but I can't think of it right now, because this is a, it's a decor, even Burger King has the one on Michigan Avenue near, uh, Gup. They have that same type of, um I guess vinyl type fence, but it's a decor to it. It's not just what we, you know, anyway. Um, Mara, you, I'm sorry, go ahead, you had something.
Well, I was just gonna say, if the commission wishes to offer guidance, the planning department would review um, this application when it reaches final site plan, but then also this, um, this applicant would be at city council and could disclose more information then too.
Okay.
Or you could table it and wait for the applicant to come. Those are all three options.
Well. Okay, we, we couldn't take a little wait for the applicant to come. I don't know what their timeline and process is, however. I, I know these things do come before us and they're alerted that it's coming before us, and I know things happen and they can't always make it, but at least, you know, a representative or someone, you know, could have been here. Um, so, uh, commissioners, it is on you to, what's the motion? We're in discussion, right? Yeah, we're in discussion.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so I guess it can be.
What did I do? I did the motion, didn't I?
Yeah, we did a motion and a support. We were in discussion. So, okay, so you made your motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm in my motion table, decide it until.
Alright, there's, uh.
The support.
It's been properly moved.
And supported.
To table.
To table this item into the next meeting, so that we can get clarity from the applicant, and that's the special land use.
No.
You want for special land use defense.
Yeah. Special land use comes under the, under the fence and not the site plans. I guess it's in one vote. It would be this.
Site plan would be.
Okay, let's rewind. So let's rewind.
That was correct, Chair.
Huh?
That was correct.
What, that was correct?
Yep. Now we're moving on to the site plan considerations.
Okay, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
That's it's not on the.
The industrial fence screening is a requirement through the special land use standards. But it is also featured on the site plan.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, alrighty, um, all in favor, uh, all opposed. Motion passes. That item is tabled. Now we're over to the site plan. The floor, uh, and I guess we can follow suit if you so choose. Is there support?
Support.
Been properly moved by Mayor Wibley, supported by Commissioner Daniels. Is there further discussion? For the record, it appears we are tabling both of these items for the simple fact that we need to speak with the applicant and go over these. Is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor, uh, all opposed. Motion passes. Both items have been tabled for item A. We're down to item B. Case number two-two dash zero five, TA, rezoning from B three general business district to M one, light industrial district at three thousand Middlebelt Road. Reviewing consideration of recommendation to approve the rezon. Request from B three, general business district to M one, light industrial district at three thousand Middlebelt Road to city council. Abdul Saleh is the applicant. The floor is open for a motion. And again, this is just for rezoning purposes. Floor is open for a motion going twice. Floor is open for a motion going three times. And the rezoning fails due to a lack of support. And ma'am, you will have an opportunity to speak during public talk. Item C. Case number twenty-two dash sixteen, special land use and twenty-two dash, um, uh, okay, let me just read, I'm sorry. Twenty-two dash fifteen, site plan review. Adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in the center at two-nine-eight-nine-nine Michigan Avenue. Reviewing consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request and approval of site plan for an adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in the center and general retail in the B three general business district at two-nine-eight-nine-nine Michigan Avenue. Again, these are two separate motions, one is special land use and one is site plan review. For the special land use, the floor is open for a motion. Floor is open for a motion going twice. Floor is open for a motion going three times. And motion fails due to lack of support. We're down to now the site plan review. Floor is open for a motion for site plan review. Mara.
Do you wish for me to introduce some of the conditions or the conditions found in from the planner's report for the site plan?
Uh, no, cuz we called it for the vote. If it goes open to discussion, then yes.
Okay.
Floor is open for a motion going once.
Did you move to, where we are now, we are?
Your site plan review for item C.
Oh, still on C.
Well, special land use fail. Floor is open for a motion going two times.
Um, so I think if the city attorney were here, he might reiterate that the planning commission would need to prove a site plan if it follows a zoning ordinance.
Fair enough. Commissioners, are you, did you, did you understand that?
Said that again, she said, say that one more time.
If the city attorney were here, he would reiterate to the commissioners that they need to support a site plan if it follows a zoning ordinance.
This would be per the Michigan zoning enabling act, right?
Yes.
Oh, the floor is open for a motion going three times.
Make the motion to, you root the site plan according to the. He's just that attorney.
So, well, the attorney's not here, so you can't say it.
You can't say him, right.
Say it per the Michigan.
Right, yeah, to the Michigan zoning commission.
Anyway, yeah, alright, is there support? There's one going twice. There's one going three times. Motion fails due to lack of support. Item D. Case numbers twenty-two dash eleven, special land use and case number twenty-two dash ten, site plan review. Adult-use marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provision in the center and general retail. Reviewing consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request and approval of site plan for an adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in the center in general establishment in the B three general business district at two-nine-seven-zero-nine Michigan Avenue. John McMullin is the applicant. And separating the two, floor is open for a motion for the special land use.
That's the one without an address.
Uh, yes, yes.
It's next to the, um, the flight.
Yes.
So I make a motion to approve special land use.
Is there support?
Support.
Has been properly moved, there's support, uh, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Is there further discussion? Here and none, all in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Motion passes. Floor is open for a motion for the site plan review.
Same case number two, two-two-one-one, no, that's two-two-one-ten?
Uh, two-two-one-zero.
Yes.
Yeah.
Recommendation for site plan with two-two-one-zero.
Is there support?
Support.
I'm sorry, your motion was to approve?
Prove the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and it's still support?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair. Are we saying approve the site plan with the conditions outlined in the planner's review?
Yes, you got it right. That's correct. And you still support that?
Yes.
Was probably moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Any further discussion?
What are the conditions? I'm sorry, I don't wanna belabor.
On page three of the packet.
Okay.
List the site plan considerations.
I went through those.
And.
Was it the high level? What would deter it from happening?
Sorry?
High level, what would deter it from happening? I saw the other ones.
Nothing will deter this project from happening. This, the conditions outlined in this report offer, I think they're all actually requirements that the applicant needs to abide by to follow the zoning ordinance.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to make clear. Thank you. Any further discussion, commissioners? Here and none, all in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, let me find my spot. Okay, here I am. We are down to item E. Case number two-two dash two-zero, special land use and two-two-one-nine, site plan review. Adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in the center at two-six-two-zero-one Michigan Avenue. Reviewing consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request and refu- and approval of site plan for an adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in the center in the B three general business district at two-six-two-zero-one Michigan Avenue. Abe Hatcham is the applicant. Again, separating two, floor is open for a motion for the special land use.
I'm going to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for marijuana provisioning center at two-six-two-zero-one Michigan Avenue. The city council with the required conditions as outlined per, um, planning standards.
Is there support?
Support.
They're probably moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Davis. Is there further discussion? Here and none, all in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving over to the site plan review. Floor is open for a motion. I'm sorry, go right ahead, Mara.
Well, I only heard this time that there's support for the provisioning center, and there's no acknowledgement of the request for the adult-use retailer.
Thank you for catching that. Let's rewind.
So I was trying to reiterate them.
So it's two uses for special land use, adult use and medical. Uh, and what was stated, Mara?
Um, on page three of the project packet, there are two offers.
Oh, okay, I see it.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes. To include, to include special land use for marijuana adult-use retailer at the same address, two-six-two-zero-one Michigan Avenue with required conditions per the, um, conditions listed below per the, um, planning, um, department.
Does that motion satisfy the inquiry, Mara?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Is there still support?
Yes.
Great. Is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now we're moving over to the site plan review. Excuse me, um, floor is open for a motion.
A movement, Chair.
Yes, he can do something like that. Support. If I had known that, I wouldn't have been on.
Well, someone we got. But discussion has been properly moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Daniels. I just wanted to make sure, uh, Mara, you look. Like you're gonna ask something.
I just want to make sure that we. I I I don't know what the minutes will say. But that we acknowledge both special land use requests for two-nine-seven-zero-nine as well. And I know that's going back.
Okay, let's finish this one. And then we'll do that since we're in discussion already on this particular. Uh, topic, we'll clarify that. Or I'm sorry, this particular applicant, then we'll clarify that. Uh, is there any further discussion on item E? Here and none, all in favor? All the polls? Motion passes, and that was the second vote for the site plan review. For item E. Uh, because we did the special land use first.
Right.
Alright. Let's rewind really quick to item D for two-nine-seven-zero-nine. The inquiry or the question on the floor was to ensure that. The motion for the special land use. Was inclusive of adult use and medical? Is that what you're requiring about?
Yeah, provisioning centered adult-use retailer.
Okay. Um, who's the motion maker? The Commissioner.
Two-nine-seven-zero-nine Michigan.
Right.
You said?
Davis.
Yes.
Okay. Was there a motion to include both of those?
That's what I thought I said, more retailer and provisioning center.
Yes. Okay, and is there still support?
Yeah.
Alrighty, all any further discussion on that? Because I'm retaking this vote, it's it's late. I just want to make sure we are on the same page. All of it, no further discussion? All in favor? All the polls? Motion passes and that verbiage is inclusive. That was item E, no, 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 I'm sorry, that was item B, eight-two-nine-seven-zero-nine Michigan Avenue. Alrighty. Moving uh, back past E, that passed already, we're down to item F. Case numbers twenty-two dash fourteen, special land use and twenty-two dash thirteen, site plan review. Adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in the center. Review in consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request and approval of site plan. For an adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision in center in the B two. General Business District at one-four-four. Four Inkster Row. The floor is open for a motion separating the two, the floor is open for a motion for the special land use.
So move us, Chair.
So probably moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Davis. Is there further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? I'm sorry, let's make sure we got it clear.
Adult use and the medical use.
Okay.
And then also with the conditions outlined in the.
Alright, is there still support? Sport, alrighty, um, any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor?
Alright.
All the polls? Motion passes. Now we're moving over to site plan review. Floor is open for a motion.
So move us, Chair.
Support. Probably moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Davis. Is there discussion?
Yes, any uh, conditions of the site plan? All conditions that was recommended in the site plan?
Said that already.
Oh, you did.
For the special. He want to add that to his motion, all your recommendations for the site.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
For the site plan, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? All the polls? Motion passes. We are down to miscellaneous. Uh, the only thing for miscellaneous is to, as I stated earlier, when our BD convened, we had three different actresses and of course two vacancies. Uh, the mayor did say, you know, he would be appointing people, so those in the general public. To your expertise being something along the lines of planning and everything like that, make sure you see the mayor. Uh, it is his appointment and the city council confirms it, but we would like to feel that's an I member body. Um, that way we make sure we're not in jeopardy of a quorum when things come up, because people do have last minute things to happen in their life and you're unable to make the meetings at times. Other than that, does this body have anything miscellaneous for the general public before we just want the public participation, if you will? Here and none, we are down to second hearing of the public. Does anyone from the general public that wishes to address this body at this time, um, please, um, you had approached the podium earlier? Oh. Okay, no problem, um, please approach podium station A for the record and you're free to address this body at this time.
Senator Rotley, resident. I have been hearing a lot about how all these uh. Applications were processed during an eleven-day period when the. Previous moratorium was over. How many of those were business days?
How many of those were who? I'm sorry.
Business days.
One-year extension with, okay, so a moratorium on all recreational retail licenses except micro businesses was originally issued. December twenty-first, twenty-twenty for one year, through December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. A one-year extension for the moratorium was issued on January third, twenty-twenty-two for a one-year period through January twenty-twenty-three. This is from city council minutes from January third, twenty-twenty-two. There existed a twelve-day period where the moratorium lapsed and the city was obligated to accept applications.
How many of those were business days? Because if I recall correctly. That was the Christmas. Holiday and city hall was closed. So I'm just inquiring.
Were they, were they, uh, the moratorium expired, Mara? Uh, I'm sorry, did the December twenty?
December twenty-first.
We had actually talked about that before at the council meeting before that. In December. Where it expired or when it expired.
Would have been the twentieth, right?
I just want to know how many of those business days the city hall was open.
You know, I think it was literally one of them at the calendar.
So one business day because the holiday fell on there and everything was closed.
Right, everything was closed, so I want to know how many days were actually open where applications were being accepted. One, which is what I said in the first place, but I keep hearing this eleven, so if we're going to be. Let's be accurate. That's all I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the general uh, public who wishes to speak at this time and address this body?
Guys, I'm confused as to why you refuse to make a motion on um, the site plan review and special land use for two-nine-eight-nine-nine. I'm confused as to why you refused, why did you refuse to make a motion on uh, two-nine-eight-nine-nine, special land use and site plan review? Yet made motions on, you know, Abe's and uh, the strip club's place. You know.
Yeah, I think uh, just for me, if I can be as the mayor. You 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 said you were gonna actually take the building that's existing.
Yep. Should have made a motion tonight, though.
Yeah, well.
Required to make a motion, at this point, you required to make some kind of motion, especially on the site plan review, um. I am taking an existing building because the city and not through your fault, obviously administrations go, however the law evolved. Uh, requires me to take this route and what you've done right now is you've created. A situation where um, flight club potentially could build their building out. To me, it's very unlikely that'll be developed in less than two years. Um, just depending on the the nature of construction, but I don't think that really gives an answer, um. You know, um, if you, if that was the issue, again. I mean, site plan review, uh, the site needs special land use, um, that's a consideration city council. They want to say, hey, you're doing one. One phase versus two phase versus three phases and make some articulable argument as to why it doesn't meet SLU or some subjective. Uh, uh, reason why that doesn't meet it, that's that's fair for city council to do, right? But not this body. Um, because again, that's not, that that's.
This is not where the plans are made to recommend to city council or what?
The plans meet code, yeah, so so at this body, if the plans and the application meets special land use and site plan. Review meets a code, it needs to be recommended to city council. City council can then uh, sub. Infuse potentially their subjective intent into the special land use requirements itself. Uh, but not, you know, this body, I mean, I didn't hear a reason stated on special land use. At all, I mean, is there a reason from the special land use uh, uh, ordinance that? That will cause a denial here, I mean. Your own department said no. Right, uh, the same way they said no in every other case. So I just don't see why, the fact that I'm building phase one versus. Phase two and phase three at the same time is kind of irrelevant. I mean, that's the nature of the beast. You create a situation where I have to do that. Right, because you you approved the SPR. And uh, for SPR and SLU, uh, one. Commission hearing ago, another site, a blue property next to this property, so this has to be attacked this way.
So that we need to state um, the reason of denial?
Yep, you well, you didn't deny, that's the point, is you made no motion.
Motion at all.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, but that that, but that, but. You failed because you, you know, you, at some point you discussed to not make a motion, right? I mean, that's why this failed. You know, to, that's why you failed to make a motion.
Not making a motion.
Uh, it's strange to me that, that's fine, that is what I'm saying, it's strange to me that that this site was, no motion was made on this site, but they were made on the other sites. Right, and especially for a reason, for for what, building in multiple phases, it doesn't make sense to me.
Not multiple phases for me, I was thinking with your first phase, it's not showing initiative. So what we're talking about, we're talking about a multi-million dollar business.
Yeah.
Talking about taking a building that.
That's right.
We both know, not in any condition, you should tear the building down.
You just made a motion to approve as the same, a similar site.
Say you got my, you got my position on it, so you can come back to us. Um, the next meeting. With something better.
No, that's that's not how this this goes, um. It's not possible, right, um. I am allowed to uh, uh, redevelop that building, right, and the reason it's happening this way is because. Of the ordinance, the ordinance in effect right now that requires someone to get special land use, SPR, get a C, develop the whole place and get a COO, get a license. And meet the buffers, right? That's why it has to be done this way, um, if you guys change the ordinance, sure, you know, maybe we can do something different, but at that time, uh, we can consider that, but at this point, we can't, we can't. Uh. Develop the entire property. Right, and one fell swoop, that'll take years, and that's why we have the phase development. That we have is because it does take years to do that.
Well, Eric, even with the first phase, I'm staying, I mean.
Yeah.
What's your first phase looking like?
Have you seen the plans? Let me pull them up. So we understand how we got here, um, my client who owned that property had applied to uh, to operate a, uh, what is it? A uh, car dealership at that property, after he purchased it from the owner of Howard's Cars. Well, the 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 kids of. My client had applied. Uh, previous administration to use that site as a car dealership and he was denied that, and so this site sat vacant for years. Been vacant for, oh, a hundred percent, right, it's been vacant, but not for lack of my client trying, for lack of the city's approval, for whatever reason. Now, this is. You look at this site here. This is phase one, this side here, this parcel here. This is phase one. Phase two is this building. Up to here. Along with the pond. Well, in phase one, there is development, there's parking, uh, there's redevelopment, the actual building itself, and again, this is something we have to do, this is a very short-term. Uh, thing we're doing phase one, that has to happen for us to secure a business license and set the setback. Right, from this property. And then we can begin phase two, and again, that's why we proposed to build this in two, in three phases, with phase one beginning immediately and phase two, uh, being done by twenty twenty-three, please.
Uh, good evening. I do not see the difference between. Our phase one. And the approval for the project. On Inkster. That's a six-hundred-square-foot building that's existing. That is in no better shape. Than the building that we have. Uh, that we're developing in phase one, which we are re. You know. We're developing that. So, uh, it it's really kind of puzzling how. On one hand. This project is okay, but on the other hand, this project is not, so. Honestly, it's. Uh, it's difficult to.
I want to be very clear for the record, this is the exact same site, this application came in originally. Uh, was the first marijuana application, uh, recreational marijuana application, they came in after the last ordinance was adopted. Okay, and this sat. In the offices for months while other applications were submitted and reviewed and sent, comments were sent back. This application sat for months, the same one, and you're doing the same thing here, so I mean, this is, this is. More than an issue and it's very telling what's going on here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak at this time and address this body? Here and none, the floor is open. Here and none, the floor is open for a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
So move us, Chair.
They're probably moved, this, probably moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Mayor Wimberly, all in favor? All the polls? Motion passes, the time is ten oh six, this meeting is now adjourned.
You all, for your time again.
Thank you.